Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 28, 2020 Glendale City Council meeting. Due to the evolving situation with COVID-19 and health recommendations from LA County Health Department, the Glendale City Council meeting will be available to the public electronically. Due to social distancing requirements, the public will not be able to attend the meeting. The public is encouraged to watch and participate from the safety of their homes to practice social distancing. This meeting can be viewed on local cable, Charter Cable Channel 6 and Spectrum, of course, and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. You may also stream online through our website, www.glandale.gov, by scrolling all the way to the bottom of the webpage and selecting "Live Streaming," which is the third icon from the left. For public comments and questions during the meeting, call 818-937-8100, and you can see it on the screen. City staff will be submitting these questions and comments in real time to the appropriate person during this meeting. With this being said, may I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brotman.
Here.
Devine.
Here.
Pisakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Agajanian.
Present. Thank you, Mr. Agajanian. I will lead the flag salute. Please repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Please remain standing for tonight's invocation. Tonight, we give thanks for the continued blessing on this fine city and its leaders. We ask that you be a guide to our council in all of their consideration. We also pray that our city, county, state, nation, and the whole world recover from this pandemic and pray for those who are suffering from this disease and their families. Let us pray that the time we spend with loved ones allow us to reflect on what's important. Let us all do small things with great love for the safety of our families, community, and our fellow human beings. We pray for safety and health and for peace here at home and around the world. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Agajanian. Okay, before I go to the next item, I want to recognize those who are here at this time. Yasmin Beers, city manager, is here, maybe. Mike Garcia, city attorney. Of course, you guys know our city manager and city attorney, but some of the people who are here present, they may not know. Aram Ajimian, the newly elected or elected by city council, city clerk is here. Thank you for your presence and congratulations to you.
Thank you.
This is the first meeting under your leadership as city clerk.
Thank you, ma'am.
Rubik Golanyan, Assistant City Manager, PE, is here. John Takhtalian, Deputy City Manager, is here. Thank you. Carl Povolaidis, Police Chief, is here. Silvio Lanzas, Fire Chief, is here, present. Anahit Magarchian, Administrative Assistant, is here. Thank you. Angie Mizirkani, Administrative Assistant, is here. Jason Bradford, Chief Information Officer, is in here. Thank you. Hago Pofseppian, Assistant Chief Information Officer, is present. Liz Zed, Haglia Soto, is here, IT Application Manager. Huric Hyrapetian, Executive Assistant to City Council, is she here?
Yes, she's in the back.
And Yazdan Omrani is here, our Public Director. And we have guests today also, but before I get to that point, Allison Finch, Public Safety Business Corridor, is here. Jill Walton is here, President of Memorial Hospital, thank you for coming. And Dr. Wang is here, thank you for your presence. So with that, what's next, please?
Next would be the agenda for the April 28, 2020 regular meeting of the Glendale City Councils posted on Friday, April 17, 2020, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next would be presentations and appointments.
We have an agenda preview with Mr. Golanyan.
Okay, Mr. Golanyan.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. For May 5, 2020, we have a special meeting of the Glendale City Council commencing at 9:00 a.m. We have a report from the Finance Department relating to the Budget Study Session Number One, and includes COVID-19 financial impacts, general fund update and budget, as well as Measure S funds discussion and an organizational profile. The Glendale Housing Authority, we do not have any business agenda items. However, we'll have a joint meeting of the City Council and the Housing Authority commencing at 3:00 p.m. We have one report from Community Services and Parks related to the fiscal year 1920 CDBG, ESG, and Home Annual Action Plan substantial amendment related to CARES Act funding. We have another special meeting in the afternoon at the Glendale City Council commencing at 3:00 p.m. We have two items from Community Development Department, starting with 340 North Central Avenue Stage 1 and 2 Design Review for Proposed Three-Story Commercial Office Building, followed by Art and Entertainment District Retail Unit. In the evening, the regular City Council meeting commencing at 6:00 p.m. On the consent items, we have three items from Glendale Water and Power, starting with the adoption of specifications for the Rossmoyn Substation Landscape Improvement Project and to advertise for bid, followed by Amendment Number One to Professional Services Agreement with VCI Utility Services to provide GWP with design services for fiber optic network expansion. And thirdly, Amendment to Contract with West Coast Arborist for Tree Trimming Services in accordance with a new prevailing wage determination. We also have a report from Community Services and Parks regarding Acceptance of Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act Additional Assistance Funds to COVID-19 Response Project. Under action item, Glendale Water and Power, Regarding a Five-Year Service Authorization for Electrical Protection and Communication Devices and Software for the GWP Electric Services Division. And lastly, from Management Services, Regarding Appointments to Fill Vacancies on Various Agencies. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Golanyan. We have an appointment for a board, or a commission, actually, who will present the...
I'm going to read that into the record, yeah?
Sure. 3B would be appointment of the Board and Commission Member. B1 would be Greg Astorion, Civil Services Commission.
So is there any member of City Council? Any member of City Council wants to express or support the, I think, appointment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Yeah, I would like to make a comment if I could.
Please, you're welcome to do it.
I just, I'm somewhat uncomfortable with this appointment. I was not impressed with Mr. Astorion's attacks on me during the campaign. I'm a big boy, I've got thick skin, so I can take attacks, and I can even take attacks that are based on kind of made-up nonsense from gadflies and newsletters. But from somebody who purports to be a serious candidate for City Council, for a City Commission, I expect that if somebody's going to attack, it's supportable, and I believe his attacks were. I've also seen him in this demonstrate something that I've seen on the Planning Commission and in stakeholder meetings I've attended with him, and that is someone who accepts the information he's given and isn't willing or able to do his own independent research. I saw this with the Grayson Project and with his vote to go forward with the Shoal Biogas Project without an EIR. And I think it's not what we want on a commission as important as this one. And I was also uncomfortable with the conduct of his campaign. Specifically, he sent out a mailer early on with logos of a number of organizations that he worked for, including the Kiwanis Club Rotary, even had the City of Glendale logo on this mailer. And the effect was to create the impression that these groups were endorsing him. He got a cease and desist from the city. And, you know, I'm sorry, but someone as experienced as Mr. Astorion with the experienced and highly-paid campaign team that he had, you know, doesn't do this by accident. So I'm uncomfortable, but out of respect for you, Mr. Mayor, I am not going to vote no, but I do want to express my concerns about this appointment.
Thank you very much. Is there any other comment from council members? Okay, can we vote on...
Nomination.
Yes, please, I'm listening.
I'll move the nomination.
Thank you, thank you. Can we vote on the item, Mr. City Clerk?
Sure. Councilmember Brotman.
I'll abstain.
Devine.
Yes.
Pisakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian.
Yes, thank you. So congratulations to Mr. Greg Astorion. Next item, please.
Next item would be consent items. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of the council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before motion is proposed.
Okay. May I have a motion for this item?
One second, sorry, Mr. Mayor, if I might.
Yes, please.
I know that a member of the public wants to pull one of the items and discuss it separately, but she has said the phone lines are closed. Can we make sure that she's able to dial in?
I don't see any call here unless... They are working on it, we will wait for...
A council member can pull the item.
You can pull it out and pull it.
Okay, all right, we can't...
I'll pull, it's, what is it, 4B? B, B, B.
We are...
B.
4A, 4B?
4B.
B, okay.
4B.
All right. Okay, but so you want to be pulled?
Councilmember Brotman, would it be 4B?
Yes.
One second.
I'm sorry, now what we are doing?
So there was a motion to move the rest of the consent calendar.
The rest of the calendar, okay. So may I have a roll call for the rest of the consent items?
Councilmember Brotman.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Pisakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian.
Yes, so we go to 4B?
Community Development Regarding SP2 Grant Update and West Glendale Sustainable Transportation and Land Use Study Proposed Contract Amendment to Professional Services Agreement with Cradnell Arambula to Include Multi-Family Mixed Use and Tropical Center Plan Objective Design Criteria. One motion accepting $625,000 in SP2 planning grants funding. Two motion authorizing an amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with Cradnell Arambula, a professional corporation, increasing the total contract cost by $155,000 utilizing SP2 grant award funding to complete updates to the multi-family mixed use and tropical center plan design and development standards. Three, resolution appropriation in the amount of $625,000 for the SP2 planning grant, of which $155,000 will be used to add additional funding for the Professional Services Agreement with Cradnell Arambula.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council.
Yes, please, city manager, Yasmin Beers.
Yes, sir. I checked with staff, and the phone lines are open, just as an FYI for the community. They are open, and folks can call in. But with that being said, Mr. Mayor, would you like to have a report on this item?
If the call is on this item, I would like to hear them first.
We don't see any...
Is this on this item?
Yeah.
Or we have to ask?
Is there a call?
Yes.
Okay, it probably is, though.
You are with the mayor and City Council members. Is your question, or whatever you want to ask, is it about item 4B? Is the listener, I mean, is the call?
Yes, I'm here.
You are the...
Hello.
Your question is about, or question is about item 4B?
Yes, please, I'd like to make a public comment, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Agajanian, congratulations on your appointment. Good evening, council. My name is Kathy Yurka, and I'm calling as a member of the Verdugo Woodlands West Homeowners Association Board. I'm hoping that council can help us better understand the grant, what it entails, and what it obliges us to do. The staff report talks at length about council having directed staff to examine multifamily development standards, things like height, setbacks, lot coverage, et cetera. However, multifamily development standards is not listed under the initiatives for which the planning grant would be used. The initiatives refer instead to, quote, "updating mixed-use development standards in commercial corridors and drafting objective design standards for all multifamily and mixed-use projects." There's a big difference between updating mixed-use development standards in commercial corridors and updating development standards for all multifamily areas. Are updating multifamily development standards part of the scope of work of the grant or not? The staff report is unclear. I reviewed the October 8, 2019 meeting where council provided direction in this matter during oral communications. The direction was limited to small sites of four to six units and to looking at the subterranean parking requirement, height, and open space. Then, council member Garpatian had wanted to open all the multifamily development standards to review, but that suggestion was not taken up by his colleagues. I'm a little concerned about momentum toward a blanket change in multifamily development standards citywide. Exemptions from development standards, including height, SAR, setbacks, is the biggest incentive for creating affordable housing in the city. Changing development standards makes little sense unless the city wants to prioritize more market-rate housing, which I don't think it does. It should be noted that the developer who came to council to ask for these changes does not want to participate in an affordable housing program. I also hope that the creation of objective design standards for multifamily properties does not suggest that design review would play a diminished role. Objective design standards set minimum benchmarks, they really don't get you very far. Residents have been infuriated by the state's attempts to eliminate design review for many projects. I do understand Glendale's wanting to be proactive if that comes to pass, but it's also important to remember that unlike many other communities, design review has not been abused to prevent the construction of new housing in Glendale, far from it. The state of California, lastly, is spending a lot of money on these grants, and as far as it's concerned, Glendale's development standards should probably be limited only by the laws of physics. And so I'm wondering what the grant may oblige Glendale to do by way of adopting or otherwise implementing the proposals. I thank you very much for your time and for opening the phone lines.
Thank you very much, thank you. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if you'd like, we'll go directly to...
The city manager.
To Philip Lanzafein, Director of Community Development, and Bradley Calvert, as well from Community Development. They're on WebEx and can provide a report to council and answer some of the questions that Ms. Yurka brought forward.
Okay, Mr. Lanzafein.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I will turn to Bradley Calvert. Because on October 22, when this grant was originally brought, I was not in the audience, I was out of town that day. Mr. Calvert was, and I'll let him brief you on the grant and the purpose of it.
Please, Mr. Calvert. Good evening, Mayor, good evening, council members. As, on October 22, we came to council in search of resolution to apply for these SP2 planning grant dollars. We had outlined a number of projects as part of that. The goal of the SP2 planning grants is to, one, help facilitate the production of housing, but also advance planning initiatives on the local level. As part of that, we included in that scope updates to the multifamily design standards, the mixed-use design standards, and the tropical design standards. The intent behind this, especially when we use the term "objective," is there have been a number of state proposals and state laws that have looked to remove subjectivity from the review process. This is not to take away the design review process, that would still be preserved, projects would still go through the design review process. The goal is to create measurable and identifiable and objective design standards, essentially that can be measured. If you recall from downtown specific plan, we had a number of standards such as that. One of the reasons why we're doing this is to sort of preempt that. So a lot of these proposals, a lot of these state proposals, look to take away our ability to update, to change our design standards, and to preserve some level of local control. We don't want to get rid of subjective design standards, we're trying to look for a way to make them measurable and essentially make them more objective so that we can maintain them. And the multifamily standards were a portion of that body of work.
Thank you. So is there, okay, so may I move the item if there is no other questions or explanation?
I might, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
Just if I could make a quick comment, I just want to emphasize what the caller raised, you know, the concern that she raised. So I understand, you know, the state is pushing on us, they're pushing on everybody to reduce, you know, remove subjectivity, and I think like a lot of the things we're seeing from the state, it's because of cities that have not been good actors, right? They've been using subjective design standards to prevent or downsize, you know, projects. And Glendale's, you know, not in that camp. I mean, Glendale has been very accommodating, so it's frustrating that, you know, we're being pushed to move in a direction because other cities have been, have been bad actors, as I said. We're not Beverly Hills, we're not Huntington Beach. And I know everybody on council feels this frustration, it's come up when we've talked about SB 50, when we've talked about the ADU bills. So I know that, you know, we're probably not going to win the fight to get responsible cities exemption on some of these rules, so it does make sense for us to get ahead of it, I understand, and, you know, start thinking about what objective design standards would look like. But I want to make sure we don't go beyond where Sacramento is. I mean, if our hand is forced, our hand is forced, but I don't want us to get ahead of that and start implementing things that we don't have to because we're concerned about what's coming. So that's really all it is. You know, there's a strong sense in the community that we have not gotten the quality design we deserve, and I think we need to respect that. And also, I think, an issue like this, it troubled me that it was on the consent calendar because it's a very sensitive and important issue, and I think that we need to make sure that it's fully cleared with the public every step of the way as we go forward with this. So that's all, I'm going to support this, I just wanted to make sure that going forward... You know, there's a strong sense in the community that we have not gotten the quality design we deserve, and I think we need to respect that. And also, I think, an issue like this, it troubled me that it was on the consent calendar because it's a very sensitive and important issue. And I think that we need to make sure that it's fully cleared with the public every step of the way as we go forward with this. So, that's all. I'm going to support this. I just wanted to make sure that going forward, we, you know, we understand how sensitive this is, and we make sure that we give it the space it needs to be just...
Thank you. Any other comments?
I have a question.
Yes, council members. Councilmember Divine?
Divine? Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Garcia and City Manager Spears, if the state comes down with, passes a bill of some sort with more draconian rules and regulations and zoning and land use issues, will, this will trump them, right? If we do this now, since we have this ordinance in place or this grant in study in place, we will trump whatever actions they are attempting to, or whatever control they're trying to take away from us?
Not necessarily, Ms. Divine. Really, if the state adopts something that is more strict or more harsh than what we come up with, we'll have to abide by that. What has happened is Sacramento has put out these very draconian plans, and cities have pushed back saying, "You're taking away our local control." What more and more we're seeing is Sacramento saying, "Okay, you clean up your house or we're going to clean it up for you." This is us taking that proactive step to say, "We'll be responsible. We will map these things to produce more housing. Let us have our local control." That's really what this is about.
Okay. That's it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions? Okay, I have a question, too. What happens to the balance of the money?
Oh, for the other...
Yes. The amount is, excuse me, the amount is 625. This was 155 going for this purpose. So, the contract amendment is 155, right?
Correct.
155,000. So, then, what about the balance of it?
Some of that is being used to update our land use and housing elements, our mixed-use development standards in commercial quarters, as was talked about, some of the tropical code work that we need to do. If you recall, the council did not adopt the South Glendale Community Plan, but they did adopt the tropical plan and asked for us to bring some code changes back. And then, we will also use this for some of the planning on the two vacant sites or two housing sites that the council recently purchased to put together an RFP. Actually, that work should be done fairly quickly.
Thank you. Okay. This is item 4B, one consent calendar. So, is there a motion to approve? Okay.
Seconded, so roll call.
Councilmember Brotman?
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. So, thank you. Next item?
Next item would be city council and staff comments.
Okay. Is there any comment by city staff?
No, sir.
No? How about city council members? Any comment?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please. Councilmember...
I should have probably made these comments earlier, but I'd like to nominate Mr. Steven Matier to the Planning Commission.
Okay. They'll make a note of it. City manager will make a note of it. Thank you. Okay. What's the next item, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Is this city council comments, right?
Yes. That's right.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead.
I have three items. I might. First, I want to make two nominations.
Okay.
One is for the Design Review Board. I want to nominate Francesca Smith.
And?
And for the Glendale Water and Power Commission, I would like to nominate Ted Flanagan.
And next?
And just those two for nominations. I guess at this point, I don't need to, do I need to say anything about them?
No.
Or we do that next time?
You don't have to, but I think if you want...
Next time.
Okay, next time, they say. Okay. Next.
Okay, next time. Okay. I wanted to make a proposal about how we handle design review for projects in the Downtown Specific Plan area. And I'm doing this because I noticed that on next week's agenda, we have design review coming to city council for 340 North Central. And I think shortly after that, we're going to have stage two for the Indigo Hotel. And my proposal is that we change our process so that, we change our process in which currently the DSP projects bypass Design Review Board and Planning Commission and go straight to city council. I don't know the history behind this. Maybe you can fill me in. But my suggestion is that all projects go through the relevant boards and commissions, regardless of where they're located in the city. I would say that, and I would propose that we do retain final council sign-off on Downtown Specific Plan area projects, but only after they're fully vetted by the relevant board or commission. I personally don't feel competent to do design review, and I don't think any of us here has the kind of expertise that we should have on Planning Commission and Design Review Board. And of course, it requires that we have the right expertise there, and I'm trying to contribute to that right now by appointing Francesca Smith. So, that would be my proposal. If there's anybody that would give a second, I would appreciate it. Sure, I'll second.
Okay. So...
Thank you.
We will bring it back.
So, I mean, that would be, that's in the code. So, that would be a report to come back to the council to whether, to initiate an amendment to the code, to put that, put a revised process in place.
And this item was before council during the Downtown Specific Plan in terms of one of the items. And so, I would assume that it's something that we can bring sooner rather than later just based on the fact that the work...
I can't hear you. I'm too...
Is your microphone on?
I can't understand. Sorry. Can't hear you.
So, this item was brought to the city council last year during the Downtown Specific Plan conversation with the city council. So, I would assume that we could bring a report back to the city council pretty quickly based on the fact that the work has already been done in this area. Our only question would be for the items that are coming before the city council, as councilmember Brotman brought up, in the next few weeks. Do we wait off on bringing those items to the council until council has had the opportunity to have a conversation related to this and the amount of time that it would take, and then what that means for the projects in terms of possible delays? Just want to make sure that that's part of the conversation, but we will bring the report back as quickly as possible.
My question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I may?
Councilmember Divine?
Will it just take a majority of votes to change the code? Or do we need four? How many votes?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, it's been our office's view that changes to the procedure requirements don't implicate the four-vote requirement, so that would take three votes of the council.
Three?
Three.
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to see the projects come that are on the agenda and bring this back whenever it's ready.
Thank you. Okay.
One, my third item, if I could?
Yes, please, go ahead.
I mentioned, I think it was, yeah, well, it was two weeks ago, I mentioned seeing if we could repurpose some of our roads, particularly in South Glendale, for pedestrian use. We talked about how, you know, we want people to be able to walk and social distance and or physical distance, and it's hard to do that on sidewalks, and we have a lot of open road space. So, we should, you know, we should look at that. And I think Mr. Imroni has said he's bringing something back to council shortly. I just, I want to confirm that that's happening.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, councilmember Brotman, we provided a memo to the city council today, and if I'm not mistaken, we're bringing a report back to the city council on May the 12th.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I also spoke to Mr. Imroni about seeing if we could reprogram our crosswalk signals to eliminate the need to push pedestrian buttons, which are referred to often as beg buttons because pedestrians need to beg for a light to cross, whereas cars don't. These buttons have not been looked on favorably by pedestrian advocates in any case, but with COVID, I think there's even more reason to get rid of them in high pedestrian areas since we don't want a lot of people touching the same button, especially the ones that have the little button inside, kind of a metal casing, and you have to really stick your finger in there. I think those are problematic. I know a lot of cities are looking now to change these mechanisms so that the pedestrian kind of gets at time just crossing opportunity without having to press a button. I understand from Mr. Imroni that about half of our signals can be changed remotely without sending somebody out to actually physically, you know, manipulate the device. So, my proposal is that staff come back with a plan to see if we can make changes and get rid of some of the beg buttons, especially in the downtown area. And I'd be interested in seeing, you know, what is that, what is the cost involved and what is the timing on that? So, that would be another proposal I would make today.
I'll talk about that.
Yeah.
We'll bring it, we'll bring a report back.
Okay. Is Mr. Imroni?
We'll bring a report back.
You will bring it back. Okay. So, they will bring it back, as has been said here. I hope you guys heard it. Heard, heard.
Okay, thank you. And I'm finished. Sorry.
Thank you. Is there any other comment by city council member? Okay. I would like to go to action items, if it's possible, to go to item C, I guess, 8C.
Mayor Agajanian, we still have community event announcements and the three-minute portion of the phone calls. Would you like to take that first before we go to action items?
All right. If you, go ahead, please.
Six would be community event announcement, the three-minute portion, with the general public comments. There's any calls?
I don't have any calls. So, can I go now?
Sure.
To 8C because we have guests here. I don't want to hold them here any longer. They're busy people.
I will go ahead and read 8C in the action.
Okay. We have Jill Walton, the president of Glendale Memorial Hospital here, and we have Dr. Wang from Glendale Memorial Hospital. So, I would like to ask them to come forward and enlighten us on COVID-19, if it's possible.
Mayor, I'll be reading the 8C first.
Okay.
8C would be Management Services regarding updates on COVID-19, coronavirus, and updates on emergency orders, including face covering, trails, and fire roads.
First, we go to city manager Yasmin Beers.
Yes. Mayor Agajanian, members of the city council, good evening. This evening, we are going to provide the city council with an update on COVID-19 and this global pandemic that has come before all of us and something that none of us have, I think, dealt with in any of our lifetimes. The goal in fighting a pandemic is to completely halt the spread at the end of the day. By doing so, we reduce the number of cases that are active at any given time, which in turn gives our doctors, our hospitals, our firefighters, our police officers, our schools, and those who are manufacturing vaccines the ability to prepare and respond without becoming overwhelmed at the end of the day. We are, in the city of Glendale, doing everything we can to protect the health and safety of our community. At this time, I'd like to ask our fire chief, Sylvia Alonsis, to present the city council and the community with an update of the numbers. And as you stated, Mayor Agajanian, we have Ms. Walton from Glendale Memorial, as well as Dr. Wang here, who will also provide some information. And then, we will have our police chief, Carl Povolitis, provide you with information related to education and enforcement in the community. With that, Chief Alonsis.
Thank you, Mrs. Spears. Mr. Mayor, members of council, Sylvia Alonsis, your fire chief. I'd like to start off, as I have in the last few weeks, with some updated data. Unfortunately, today, we hit some milestones worldwide and locally that are sad. They're a sad reality of where this pandemic has taken us. Currently, there are over 3 million cases worldwide. The deaths from COVID-19 worldwide are over 215,000. The cases have been confirmed in over 185 countries. The confirmed cases in the United States, we are over 1 million as of today. And in Los Angeles County, we are over 20,976, and sadly, today, we did hit 1,000 deaths in the county of Los Angeles. In Glendale, we are at 502 confirmed cases with 18 confirmed deaths, and I was just notified about two hours ago of our 18th confirmed death. The patients that have recovered from COVID-19 through our three hospitals are 138 patients. We've had 138 patients that have recovered. That number, I think I need to paint a little context to, we have 502 that have been confirmed within the community. Many of those may be people who have gone to a testing site and never went to a hospital, never were, never had symptoms bad enough to require hospitalization or even visitation at a hospital other than some type of testing facility. So, just to paint a little context, 138 out of those who have been seen at our hospital have recovered. The average age of our 18 deaths is 81 years old, and 11 deaths from the 18 have come from our skilled nursing facilities. We are, as was mentioned several times today, Glendale Memorial president, CEO Jill Walton is here. Her team and the fire department is currently working on a process to bring testing, COVID-19 testing, to our skilled nursing facilities and to the homes of our seniors. We are currently in the process of establishing that program and hope to have it up and running very soon. Next, I'd like to just show a few graphs that help to paint some of the picture of where we are in Glendale as compared to some of the cities nearby. This graph shows our new cases in Glendale, starting at about March, mid-March. And as you can tell, April was a month where we saw a fairly steady increase in new cases. We hovered at about 20 for most of the month. Last week, Friday and Saturday of last week was a bit of a peak where we saw one day where we were north of 40, greater than 40 new cases. But for the most part, we've hovered at around 20 per day for the month of April. The solid blue line that you see amongst the graph bars is the seven-day average line for new cases within our city. This next graph shows our positive cases per 100,000 by city as compared to several agencies. Los Angeles County is the blue line. Glendale, we are the red line. Los Angeles City is the yellow line. Pasadena is the green line, and Long Beach is the orange line. And as you could tell, for the most part, we are trending as those partner agencies and partner cities are trending. Long Beach is a little bit below. As of today, our numbers are basically 250 per 100,000 cases. These next two graphs show our, the sad graph on the left is the deaths by age. As I mentioned, our average age is 81 years old. So, we've had three that were 90-plus. We've had six that were 80, between 80 and 89. Five... between 80 and 89, five that were between 70 and 79, two that were between 60 and 69, and one that was between 40 and 49 years old. The graph on the right shows the percent of population testing positive within some of the same agencies that I mentioned. And we are pretty close to our neighboring agencies. LA City is at about 24% positive. We are, excuse me, .24%. We are at 25, and Pasadena's at 26. And here's to some good news. This graph shows what the staying at home and the physical distancing has done for the state of California. As we were told in several studies, mid-April, about April 16th is when we were projected to hit our peak, when the early projections in early and mid-March predicted that our hospitals would be overrun, that the capacity would overwhelm our pre-hospital and hospital settings. I'm very, very proud to say that I believe we are past that. I believe we have flattened the curve to the point where our hospital facilities, and Dr. Wang's going to come up here in a few minutes and talk about our hospital health and the conditions of the hospital, but the projected peak that was going to overwhelm our hospitals, I think, is behind us. But it's critically important that our public continue to heed the warnings, continue to wear your face coverings when you're out of your home and visiting essential services, those essential workers, to continue to wear their mask and to provide that social distancing. Many of the fears right now is that we see a late repeat or peak of that projected peak. So this graph really illustrates what it would have looked like in mid-April had we not implemented some of the stay-at-home orders and the physical distancing that we did throughout the state. And this last graph shows the social distancing in three different areas. This was a graph that was provided through some data that Apple provided, both walking, driving, and transit. And if you're able to see on the screen, the orange line is the walking, baseline is what would normally be, and we are down about 46% for walking, below baseline, driving, also 46% below, and transit, that's our mass transit, we are 75% below baseline.
Excuse me?
Yes.
It says Los Angeles. You mean county of Los Angeles?
This is the county of Los Angeles, correct. So now, I'd like to bring up Chief Medical Officer from Dignity Health Glendale Memorial Hospital, Dr. William Wang, who will walk us through some of the medical components of where we are with this disease.
Thank you, Chief Alonsis.
Hi, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council members. So as we learn more about what's happening with the virus, we figure out what are the symptoms that are more important and are coming up. So what had happened originally was that fever, cough, shortness of breath were the original symptoms that we were concerned about. And we're telling people to be careful of that. When you feel, if you have a fever, if you have a cough, that signals that you might have coronavirus. What we've learned as the disease has progressed in the United States is that these other symptoms, and it's usually about two of these other symptoms, sore throat, headache, muscle pain, chills, repeated chills, and interesting enough, the new loss of taste or smell has been associated with 83% of the patients that have the loss of taste or smell being associated with COVID virus. So what had happened last week is the CDC had updated these symptoms for the public to be aware of, that if you have these additional symptoms, you might have coronavirus, and that you should seek medical attention. Let me pick the next. So face coverings. Why do we wear face coverings? I just wanted to stress, the whole reason for wearing face coverings, and the reason I brought both of these here, is for source control. It is not to, it's not for the public to think that they should feel safer wearing a mask. It is to prevent those people who are walking around, who don't necessarily know that they're infected, to decrease the amount of virus that they throw out. So this type of mask, which is a painter's mask, but it's still considered an N95, goes around the map, goes around your face and actually creates a seal, which is a little bit different from what we're telling people to wear out in public, which is just a cloth mask, and does not create a seal. What both of these do do is prevents me from coughing and exhaling virus out into the air. It prevents me from touching my face and then touching everything here. And someone's going to need to disinfect all of this when we're done, to leaving virus on somewhere else and that somebody else picking up that virus and then scratching their eye, touching their nose, touching their face, and then getting, contracting the virus that way. So that's what you see around the reason for wearing these masks. There has been some questions about, can, do you need to wear a mask in your car? Do you need to wear a mask in the middle of the park and there's no one around you? And the answer is no. There's no medical reason why if I'm going to my car, leaving my apartment or leaving my house and going to my car, and there's no one else around for me to put on a mask. If I'm going to work out, I'm going to run out into the, run in the park, the ideal situation is that first I would do that in the middle of the morning, in the morning when there's no one around. But if someone else is, if I'm going to run into someone, then I would have the mask available to put over myself, and again, to be courteous, so that I'm not potentially spreading virus that I don't know that I have. But there's no reason for me to be walking around in the middle of the park at 6:00 in the morning with a mask on if there's no one else around. Next slide. So our hospitals, how are our hospitals doing? Thankfully, and as the chief had mentioned, our hospitals are doing fairly well. We had prepared for a surge that really did not come. And now what we're concerned with is that the population is staying at home too long, that they're not coming into the emergency room, that they're sitting there and waiting too long to come into the emergency room and receive care. And so what we really want, the message that we want out specifically for Glendale population is if you are sick, come into the hospital. Call EMS, call 911, whatever it is, come in and let us take care of you. The hospitals are safe. We've all taken steps to isolate those that we know to be positive from those that we know to be negative. That is still the best place to get care. Don't wait until you become sicker than you need to be. Thank you very much.
I have one I ask you. So those who are affected by coronavirus, they are not in the same section where the ordinary, let's say, patients are, right? They're separate.
So at Glendale Memorial, we have isolated all of those that are positive. We've isolated those that we're not sure, and we're waiting for tests to come back. And then we have the regular population that we have.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Okay, Chief Povolitis.
Mayor Agajanian, members of City Council, just a few quick updates from the police department on sort of our enforcement and some of the things that we are tracking. To this point, we're still experiencing an overall reduction in our calls for service. We're down about 15%. But what's interesting is that is slowly starting to close as the month goes on, that our call load is now starting to increase. And not all calls are obviously created equal. And so one of the things that we've really been kind of paying attention to is those that are related to domestic disturbances. So these are the ones where we go to respond to, whether it's domestic, as we think, between two people who could cohabitate or significant others. But these are also the calls where parents and kids aren't getting along, or kids aren't getting along. And we're now starting to see that really increase for the month of April as we're going on. And we're, at least looking sort of just anecdotally at the last weekend, we're starting to see some increases in some of the domestic violence, which obviously concerns me. So we are working on some partnerships with the YWCA and some of our partners out there to make sure that people have places to call and resources, because domestic violence shelters are open for those who need to get out of a particular situation because of domestic violence. We want to make sure that message is loud and clear. And of course, we remain fully staffed to respond to those types of things. The other thing is, we continue to be very proactive in our patrols. And I'll take a couple of things. Let me just take you through a few photos from helicopter. Most of these come sort of for the mid-afternoon, from our mid-afternoon flight with, from overhead, and they will check all of our parks and our trails and so forth. For the most part, what we're finding is people are complying with the social distancing. We will find a few people in the parks, but for the most part, they are spread out. We do occasionally find hikers. Here's one where you hikers. I can tell you, if you look closely at that photo, they are looking at the helicopter, and in all likelihood, they're getting instructions from that helicopter via the public address system that they're, that they need to leave the area that are hiking trails, and the hiking trails throughout the county are in fact, in fact, closed. A few people might remember, might notice this one. It's one that's near and dear to me. It's Seven Trees. I used to enjoy hiking to it. But again, for the most part, we're having very good compliance with our community, you know, not practicing social distancing and respecting the rules. Occasionally, we are finding people on the trails. We do have motor officers that are up patrolling the trails on the fire roads and our safety patrol. Some volunteers are also checking all those on the weekends. Easter weekend, they ran into about 30 people that they needed to remind to head off the trail. And last weekend, we had about 19 contacts or so. Again, Duke Magin Park said most people are respecting the requests and the orders to practice social distancing. In terms of Glendale Police Department itself, the officers are actually out there educating, and as I will use the term, strongly encouraging people to comply with the social distancing requirements. You have a graph of about a week's worth of social distancing checks. These are just the ones that we actually log on our computer system, where an officer goes and checks something. They will log it, they'll log it with a clearing code so we can actually retrieve it from the computer. But over the, so far, just in the month of April, there have been 1,615 social distancing checks. 86% of those are initiated by the police officers that are out there because they see something, they're going through a park, they see a group hanging out in a parking lot, and they're reminding people to either to put on face coverings when they're out in public to comply with Glendale's orders. And they're also reminding people that they're not to be hanging out and that they need to move on. As I said, 820 of those have been in places other than parks, and 795 have actually been in our parks. With respect to the face covering, we already said primarily, we're still educating folks. We do get a few complaints. We have sent officers up to various parks and various places to do that. And I will say, on the, sort of the first week that, and the first full weekend in which this was, we also had about 1,000 masks that we handed out to folks when we were reminded that you needed a face covering. If they didn't have one, we would do that. I will say that while we are continuing to look at the COVID-19 issues, I will say that, if you will, our other book of business is beginning to sort of pick up. You are familiar with an incident this weekend where we had a home invasion robbery and have those suspects in custody. But we've also noticed a significant increase in our auto burglaries. So while people are home, we're also asking them to keep an eye on their neighborhood and participate in neighborhood watch. And if they do see something, please say something. Again, we are fully staffed and responding to calls for service and looking for those that are taking advantage of folks in these times. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a question, Chief. We are not issuing any citation tickets, I hope, yet.
We have not issued any citations as of yet, Mr. Mayor. That remains a possibility. But so far, I will tell you, our officers have encountered people who may not be wearing a face covering or maybe standing too close. We've actually, with the reminder from the officer, we've actually had very good compliance with people doing the right thing.
Because right now, this is a new experience for everybody. So, I mean, automatically, they may be mistaken going toward somebody else. So a few months later, it will be a different issue then.
And as I said, our idea is to get people to comply with the orders. And so as I said, that first full weekend that we were actually out there with the order, we actually had some facial coverings to actually hand out to people. We weren't charging for them. So if they didn't have one and they were in violation, the officer could actually hand them a facial cover and go, here's one that gets you through until you can get something. As I said, our goal is to get people to comply.
We have calls. I don't know. The question is, they have a question from our guests and police and fire.
May I, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, please. Councilmember Devine, go ahead.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. May I ask Dr. Wang a question, please?
Dr. Wang.
Hello.
He is here, listening to you, Councilmember.
I see him. I see him. Thank you. Dr. Wang, you were talking about the usefulness of wearing, mandating face masks or face coverings be worn all the time, whenever you leave the house. And you said it wasn't absolutely necessary?
So, yes, I can. So there's two, right, the reason to wear the face mask is not for the public to develop a false sense of security, that they're actually preventing themselves from getting sick. That's the first thing. The reason for wearing the mask is because you may be asymptomatic, and you think that you're just going to walk outside and go down and check the mail, and then you might see your neighbors and stop and talk to them. And you don't know that you're symptomatic. And then you start to cough and you spread the virus that way. So by you wearing the mask, it's called source control, you decrease the probability of you spreading the virus that you have to others, not necessarily because the other people are wearing a mask, but because you've not touched them, you haven't coughed directly into their eyes, that sort of reason. So it's not that you shouldn't be wearing a mask in public. The idea is that you shouldn't, you should be wearing a mask if you're going to be around other people. Does that answer your question?
Well, the reason I'm asking you this is because of emails that I've received from our residents that have health problems regarding wearing the face mask all the time or whenever they go outside. And some of the reports that I've been reading, the research I've been reading, I, you know, we have this mandatory face covering protocol in our city. And because now the Chief, Chief Alonsis has said that our curve has flattened, and I think there's some confusion out there about should we, shouldn't we. So I was thinking about asking my colleagues to rescind the mandatory face mask protocol. And I wonder if you could just kind of give me your opinion of that. Do you think it's any good? Or what about those that have medical problems that are, you know, claustrophobic? And, you know, I don't want to, we're not meaning to hurt people. We simply want to help people to prevent either passing it on or, you know, catching the virus, if that's what you say.
So I can get, the medical reasons for this are that if you're going to be in public with other people, that you should continue to wear a mask if you're going to be with other people. I don't foresee that recommendation going away for quite some time, because the virus will be endemic or will stay in our community for quite some time. And so you would really want to be wearing a mask if you're going to be around other people. If you're going to open the porch or stand outside and sit on your porch just to get some fresh air, there's no medical reason for you to be wearing a mask at that time. I hope that helps.
Well, I understand.
If you're going to go and walk, you know, to the mall, let's say that the malls decide to open, and there's going to be a lot of people, the general public there, people you don't know, then you should be wearing a mask for courtesy for those other people because they don't know you. And you don't want to spread the virus that you may or may not have to those other people. But if you're going to be sitting by yourself or sitting with your intimate family, and you know where they've been, and you're not concerned about them, and you're, again, you're not going to run into the general public, there's no medical reason for you to be suffering and wearing a mask in that situation.
Okay. So I guess what my question to you would be then, do you think it's necessary to make it mandatory for our residents to wear masks when they leave their homes? Or would it be, would you say it would be okay to rescind that protocol and just have them wear them when, using common sense, when they're at gatherings, when they're going to the store, when they know they're going to be around people, if they're walking or running, have a mask around their necks for air?
Unfortunately, I would say I would not rescind that at this point. I would keep with that, because people will take it, will take that and misinterpret it and take, and just take it and be too lax with that. It's, I think it's a safer public health policy to actually ask everyone to wear a mask while they're in public.
You know, thank you very much, Doctor, thank you so much, Dr. Wang. And I want to compliment Chief Povolitis. And thank you to your department for going around, you know, when you're driving, driving and on duty. And actually, around, you know, when you're driving, driving and on duty and actually handing out masks to people. And I really appreciate that. The same to Chief Lanzus for all that you're doing for our community, the fire departments and first responders and, and the whole group. So I guess I will not ask to rescind the mandatory masks. And people that have health issues, I guess, should use common sense. If they're going to be around gatherings, then they should wear them. And if they're claustrophobic and cannot, then, you know, they don't have to wear it when they're, they're not around people. So thank you so much. I appreciate the information.
Thank you. I think wearing a...
May I ask a question?
Yes, one second. Yes, one second. I think wearing a mask is required by LA County. It's not something just for...
Just in commercial, when you're going to commercial. Respectfully.
Yes. Mayor Agajanian, members of the council, only if you are for LA County, it's only when you're going into essential businesses where the employees as well as the patrons have to wear a face covering. But LA County does not have the same order that the City of Glendale has in place, which is to wear a face cover when you're outside.
How about our neighboring cities? Do you know?
They do not.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, Councilmember Katsakhian. Councilmember Katsakhian.
I believe Councilmember Najarian wants to jump in. I'll let him...
Councilmember Najarian. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Doctor, for coming. And I was trying to reach you today to go over some, run some research findings by you. But let me just talk about, because I know there was, I think the public was maybe shocked two weeks ago when we made this decision. There was a lot of discussion on social media, thinking that we were overreaching, asking for the medical literature that supports this. But we know that people can be carriers of the virus for up to 14 days. And we know that people can have the virus and be asymptomatic. We know that the infection was first thought to be carried by water droplets expelled through coughing and sneezing. There's been some research, research that has shown merely talking and breathing, sitting or panting aerosolizes the virus. That means, put it on a very small piece of mist, if you will, that's less than five microns. That's the, that's the borderline between aerosol and droplet. We know, we've heard a Belgian study that says folks that are running or walking or biking have a slipstream behind them. This is a Belgian Dutch study. It was not done by doctors, but by aerodynamic engineers. And they said that if you're biking, the slipstream virus can extend 20 meters behind you. We know that aerosols, that the virus has been found in the University of Nebraska study to be aerosolized. There's numerous studies. University of Minnesota in Minneapolis says that, that in the mind of scientists working on this, there's absolutely no doubt that the virus spreads in the air. This is a quote from Lydia Morpuska from Queensland University in Australia. This is a no-brainer. We know that the virus can live up to three hours. This is a study done and published in the New England Journal of Medicine by Doctor Van Dorfman. Up to three hours. We know that Beverly Hills has issued face mask orders, the County of Riverside. There, there may be some studies on the opposite side that say, no, it doesn't happen. But this isn't a, you know, it's not a football game where whoever has the most points at the end of the, end of the game wins. This is a timeline, making the decision if there's any credible evidence that the virus can spread through aerosol, even through droplets, then we need to have the, the masks on. And it's, even in Hong Kong, back in China, the researchers are saying that their results prove mechanistic evidence that surgical face masks could prevent transmission of human coronavirus if worn by symptomatic individuals. But I think we're all on the same page there. But there are some people that say, well, I'm just going down the street and not going to be there. And so I shouldn't have to wear a mask. You know, by that logic, I'm a very good driver. If I'm going to go out driving at night, I shouldn't have to wear my seatbelt because I'm not going to see anybody at 8:00 AM in the morning. I'm a good driver. I'm not going to crash and no one's going to be on the road. Of course, nobody knows who's going to be out there on your block walking. Nobody knows if that bicyclist who's asymptomatic but breathing is going to zip by you and leave you in his slipstream. No one knows who's going to cross in front of you when you leave your house, even though it's 5:00 in the morning. I'm not going to run into anybody. But what if someone is there? The burden to wear the mask is minimal. The benefits are human life. So that's the way I think about this. The research is continuing. There's no doubt. They're going to be researching this for years and years. But we can't make the perfect, be the enemy of the good. And I think the face mask covering requirements is good. We might be completely wrong in two years, but in that, what if we're proven right, that it did help prevent and we did save lives? So, um, thank you for your opinion, Dr. Wang. And that's, that's just how I feel. I just wish people wouldn't be so uptight about it. I know there's people who have, there's one lady that talks about difficulties with claustrophobia. I mean, what if someone came to the front door of your hospital and I've seen your hospital and it's very well guarded and hand sanitizer and gloves and masks? What if they said, hey, I'm claustrophobic. I don't want, I want to visit my friend, but I don't want to wear it? You're not going to let that person in. So it's difficult. I know it's crazy times that we're in. We're going to look back and, you know, our children will be able to say they lived through the great pandemic of 2020. But I think the city did the right thing in this. And I hope that there will come a time in the near future that these orders will be lifted and we can get back to normal. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments? Because I want to go to the phone calls. Maybe they have questions from the doctor and police chief for fire chief. Are we okay? Okay. You are on the air with city council members and mayor.
Hello?
Yes. Yes.
Am I on?
Yes. Please go away from the TV unit. So this way...
My name is Jackie Gish. I live in Glen Oaks Canyon, mayor and city council. You voted four to one to require masks for all Glendale residents when they are outside their homes, even when outside walking in quiet neighborhoods. We all notice that it's harder to walk or exercise with these masks on. Some people may be discouraged from walking at all, which of course would be very, a very bad situation, which I believe is part of the reason that Dan Brotman voted against the resolution. Your reason to vote for masks was to protect people, but the masks do not protect the people wearing them so much as protect others from the people wearing the mask. So if we as seniors are being good citizens and always wearing our masks, but many, many other people are not wearing them, including biking and motorcycles, what is the point? I doubt that many transmissions, if any, occur when people are walking in quiet residential areas and working to stay six feet apart. On the other hand, when one views the city council meetings, most of you in the room are not wearing masks. This includes the mayor, city manager, city attorney, city clerk, and others addressing the city council, people doing video, et cetera. In many cases, it does not even look like you are six feet apart. I think that if you demand that all of us wear masks when we are outside our homes and houses, you should model this behavior at your meetings where the risk is higher because you are inside. Your current action appears hypocritical. It is also not clear just how many people are in the room right now. Is there 10 people? Is it more than 10 people? And people are all using the same microphone, the same clicker for the video, the slides, without cleaning them in between. So more importantly than having all of us wear masks when walking in quiet residential areas, the city needs to emphasize to not visit others inside their homes at this time. If one walks the neighborhood when often hears gatherings of some number of people encompassing two or more family units, transmissions at these events are much more likely than for us walking in our quiet neighborhood. I urge you to reconsider the mask requirement or clap down on the people not wearing masks and definitely work harder to punish or warn people who are entertaining others or are in groups at the park. And certainly, as city leaders in the council chambers, you should wear masks and model the behavior that you want us to do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. You are on the air with mayor and city council members. Go. Please go away from the TV unit so this way it will not be... Yes, you are listening. You are on the air.
Oh, hi. My name is Jackie Stenson. I'm a resident of Spar Heights in Glendale. And my questions also are about this requirement. I know we just heard Dr. Wang say that face masks, there, there is no reason to wear them when we're out and about, not around people. I know the LA Department of Public Health and the CDC recommend face masks when we are not able to safely social distance. The LA Department of Public Health today released an announcement on Facebook saying, in fact, that, that safe advice and also saying that if you're out and about and you cannot, you know, wear a mask, if you're near people, just pull it up. I'm wondering why we are, Glendale is not following the advice of our own, you know, the CDC and also our own public health department. I think these experts, you know, they look at the big picture and they're factoring in other things. You know, they're looking at the science, but they're also looking at other health issues. The public health director last week said that people, in fact, should not be exercising or, you know, walking or running in the heat ways because of heat illness issues there. And I, you know, we know there are people with asthma or other issues. And also just the concerns about people having good mental health, being able, you know, where cooped up all day to be able to just get out and get some fresh air. Kids especially who are being homeschooled and cooped up all day long, I think it's important they be able to get outside. I'm also wondering why your recommendations haven't looked at the different health populations, haven't, haven't publicly addressed drivers or any people with health, health issues who should not feel obligated to wear these masks.
Thank you. You are on the air with city council and city mayor. Please. Please go away from the unit or reduce the volume on your phone or on TV.
Yes. I'd like to thank Councilmember Paula Devine for at least considering rescinding and at least asking an expert's opinion. I wonder if the expert, Dr. Wang, would like to weigh in on Councilmember Najarian's meta-analysis of the data that he just gave us. Does he concur with that Swedish study and the...
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to make sure the speaker's done speaking before you get the, you get the doctor to respond.
No, I will cut this off and thank you for your call.
I don't think it was...
So now we will listen to Dr. Wang.
So again, the only comment I would have to make is what, what's the medical reason for wearing a mask? It's not to prevent you from getting the disease. It's to prevent you from spreading the disease amongst other people. That's the real reason for wearing the mask. If, it's very reasonable to go outside and walk around for your health and to have a mask on you and when you come across other people, to put the mask on. That's what I would, that's, that's, that's what the medical literature says out there. And I, I'm completely aware of the slipstream that, that the council member had talked about. There is also a slipstream when you're walking. The aerodynamics of the virus don't necessarily fall on you just because, just because there's a slipstream in front of you. And that's, and that, and the research is still ongoing with that.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Wang and Ms. Walton from Glendale, Glendale Memorial Hospital. Thank you for coming and thank you for the information. And thank you, Fire Chief Lanzus and Police Chief Povolitis. So I go now back to...
Mr. Mayor, I believe Councilmember Brotman wanted to speak. He sent me a note. I'm wondering if we can hear him. I'm not sure if...
Councilmember Bratton.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Unfortunately, I was on the phone and it's locked. I wanted to go in through the phone to audio because I was told last time that the computer audio is not good quality for people watching from home. So I don't know, I'll try. Let me, let me, let me just try, hoping that people can hear me. And is, is Dr. Wang still there in the audience?
Yes. Yes, he's here.
Because I'd like to, I'd like to get his, his input further on this. Councilmember Najarian gave his opinion, but I feel unqualified to do an analysis of the research, a lot of it being not peer reviewed and a lot of it contradictory. So my question is, and I, I don't think I can see the doctor now, but are you there?
Yes, he's listening. You go ahead with your question.
Okay. So, you know, I've read, I mean, a number of things. One, I have read that from a public health perspective, not, not just, you know, the medical question, but from a broader public health perspective, that there are some potential downsides to an order that would require people to wear masks at all times when out of doors, meaning not only when they're in the vicinity of other people, but at all times. And some of those downsides could be, um, discouraging exercise. We do want people to get out, get fresh air and stay healthy, keep their moods as strong. Another one I've read about is, you know, creating kind of a social distancing fatigue. I think we're seeing that set in. And if we ask more from people than we absolutely need, I don't think it's a situation where, you know, it can't hurt. Maybe it can hurt. And then the third thing is, you know, do we sometimes, and I have read this, you know, create a false sense of security when people are wearing masks? They feel like, okay, everything's fine now. I can, I can do things that I wouldn't have done without the mask. So I, I have read, and I would like to get your, your view on, are there any potential downsides for doing what we are doing, which, to be clear, is goes beyond what California Public Health Department, LA County Public Health Department and most other cities are doing, even New York City, which did require masks outside, they only required it when people are unable to maintain physical distancing. So my question to you is, what, looking, weighing the pros and cons, where would you come out as far as a rule that would, you know, what we have now is we're saying all times out of doors and, or changing that to something which says, when you're unable to physically distance, then only then you need to wear a mask?
So if I, if I understand correctly, let, let me speak with what my, the, the medical rationale behind this, again, has to do with source control and having people...
Doctor, excuse me. Talk to the microphone.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Having people not knowing that they're actually infectious when they're infectious. So right now, I feel completely fine. I do not have a sore throat. I do not have any chills. I don't have a fever yet. But if I did today, in two days' time, 48 hours from now, I could start to feel all those symptoms and everything I've touched now could be, could be a point of causing an infection from somebody else. And the reason it could be, a reason for causing infection for somebody else is, as one of the callers had, had, had noticed, I don't have a mask in, mask on right now because I don't think, it would be very muffled. I don't think you'd be able to hear me very well. But I am talking and as I talk, there is aerosolization of the virus and that, and that's the reason why we say six feet, because the droplets go out and then because they weigh, they drop to the floor. So they're not hanging in the air for about 30 minutes, which is what we talked about for aerosolization. They drop and they get onto all of this. And then the next speaker that comes after me will... me will start touching the same stuff and won't realize what they're doing with their hands because we touch our faces multiple times, and then go from here to their eyes and then get the virus. So is it a reasonable thing to ask the public, when you're talking about population health, to wear a mask when they're out in public? I think the answer is yes. Do they need to wear a mask if there's nobody else around them? I don't, there's no medical reason to wear a mask? Again, if you're going from point A to point B and there's no one around, you're not going to spread the virus to anyone if there's no one around there. That's, I mean, that's really all I can say about that from a medical reason. If there's no one around you to spread the virus, there's no, you don't have to wear a mask at that point.
Thank you.
Okay, um, yeah, I understand the medical, the medical argument, and that's not really what I'm asking about. What I'm asking is, are there potential drawbacks to asking people to do something, which it seems what you're saying is medically unnecessary, and that is wearing a mask in, in an outdoor setting when you are not near other people?
So I don't...
So if that is medically necessary, and if there could be some potential downside by keeping people at home, not exercising, and all the other things that I mentioned, the fatigue that comes with asking people to do so much, is there a potential negative? And where would you come down on this question? Because remember, the question is not should people wear a mask when they're near other people, not when they're indoors, and not when they're in a crowded outdoor place or a place where they cannot physically distance. But very specifically, I'm asking, in the situation where they can physically distance, and it sounds like what you're saying, it's not medically necessary, is there a drawback to us requiring that?
So I am not aware of any medical reason or medical drawback to wearing a mask, just to wear a mask?
No, it's not a medical question. I think I'm...
About my own opinion?
A question.
Do you remain a psychiatrist or something? It's human behavior now.
It's from, yes, that's what public health is about. It's about human behavior. So from a human behavioral point of view, could there be negative consequences to asking people to do something that goes beyond what's medically necessary? Nobody in the California or LA County Public Health Department is recommending, and I've read California Public Health Department has on their website some concerns about this because of the negative social consequences of asking people to do this. And that's why I'm, I'm concerned, but I really want your expert advice because I do not feel qualified to make this judgment.
And unfortunately, sir, I'm not qualified to make a comment on that either.
Thank you, doctor.
Well, Ms. Beers, I, you know, because we discussed this, I wanted to get somebody in here who could address these public health questions, and if we don't have it, we're at, we're at a loss. Two weeks ago, we made the decision by the seat of our pants without having any expert input, and I thought that would be addressed today. We still don't have the input we need. I think it's a problem.
Okay, Ms. Beers, can you arrange for an expert to come and explain to us the issues which has been brought up by Councilmember Brotman?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, we strive to answer all questions that are posed by the council as well as the community. The scientific questions, the medical questions, I think, that have been posed this evening related to face coverings and the need for coverings or not, I think, has been addressed multiple times by Dr. Wang. In terms of the psychological, and if we're going to put it under the umbrella of public health in general, I'm not sure who we would bring in to provide that kind of a context for the council related to a policy decision that you all made two weeks ago and are having a conversation about this evening. The Department of Public Health and the conversation that Councilmember Brotman and I had on Friday, I believe, was related to bringing somebody in from public health. The Department of Public Health, we can always put in a request, as I shared with Councilmember Brotman, has to deal with 88 cities in LA County, and unfortunately, they're unable to attend, be on a phone conference with all of the cities that they represent at the times that we meet. But we absolutely can, can ask for that question and see if they have the expertise to be able to answer that question in a manner that would be suitable for this legislative body.
Thank you. Okay, thank you for coming, doctor, and...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I ask a few questions?
Whom you want to ask the question?
A few folks, the chief, the doctor, some of my fellow council members, staff.
No, because the doctor and Ms. Walton, they are planning to leave, so I wanted to see to ask them to stay.
That is fine, they can leave, I can ask it, I can ask the chief.
Okay. All right, Chief Lanzus.
And thank you to the doctor and other folks who attended to help clarify some issues.
Yes, Chief Lanzus are listening.
I'm here, Councilmember Kasakian.
Thank you, chief. So, you know, we see the numbers increasing and we see the numbers going up, but I'm trying to get a better understanding, as is everyone. First of all, do we have numbers of how many people have been quote unquote cured of COVID-19 coronavirus?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Kasakian, we do. Of the patients in our three hospitals, so this includes Verdugo Hills, Glendale Adventist, and Glendale Memorial, of the patients that have been seen at those facilities for COVID-19, we have 138 who have recovered.
Recovered, okay. So here's another question. Is it possible for someone to check into one of those hospitals, take the test or test positive for coronavirus, and for that person to not be attributed to the Glendale total? In other words, I'm trying to, I would like you to explain how the metrics or the numbers for the various cities are counted, and I apologize because I know you've probably talked about this and it's been explained, but I think it bears, you know, explaining again, how Glendale gets attributed these numbers. Are all the numbers of the Glendale infected individuals, ones that were either captured through Glendale clinics, testing centers, or hospitals?
Please don't apologize, Councilmember Kasakian, it's a great question. The numbers that I report, the 502 total numbers of positive cases in the city of Glendale is a number directly from the Department of Public Health. All clinics and all facilities that are providing COVID-19 testing must report their numbers to Department of Public Health. So the, the answer to your question is a very good one. You could have a member of our community who signs up through Glendale Memorial, which is one of the county sites. They have 27 county sites that are providing testing across Los Angeles County. They could go through that drive, or, excuse me, they could go through the telemed system at Glendale Memorial and be referred to a testing site outside of Glendale Memorial. They could, they could get the telemed and be told to go to the Rose Bowl, for example, and be tested, or any other type site, depending on the availability of the test. Those numbers, because of your home address from where you register, is how we get the total 502 that we have today.
Okay, so it's basically someone can get tested at any site, but their place of residence is what accounts for the Department of Public totals that we're all following every day on that website, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And in addition to that, we may have patients in our hospitals right now who are being treated who are not Glendale residents, correct?
We have, we have many.
Yes. So in other words, when someone comes in and they're testing positive and they're at Adventist Memorial or at the Keck Medical Center, we don't send them to their home city, and many people are coming here as well to be treated, just so we're all clear on that, correct?
Absolutely correct.
Okay. Now, in terms of tests, do we have enough tests to test everyone in LA County?
Again, good question, yes. I was told that the, I was told today, actually, that the chairman of the Board of Supervisors has requested enough tests to test everybody in Los Angeles County through June based on the number of tests that we've been doing averaged throughout the county. So it is my belief that their plan is to test, is to provide enough testing. I know Jill Welton is still here, and I know several of the facilities, the testing facilities are not at capacity. They, they have more availability for testing than what is being seen each day at those testing sites.
Good. That's good to hear. So that's dispelling one other rumor that may be out there, that there is enough tests. And in addition to that, in terms of the tests, when we're seeing these numbers come through and we see a spike or whatever it may be, is it possible, and, you know, if there's anyone who's a professional, medical professional, or someone with a background in research and statistics, is it possible to see spikes when there's also increases in tests or to have some correlation between the test numbers administered and the number of positive cases?
Yes. Again, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Kasakian, again, a very valid point. Yes, I do believe, and it is, this is my opinion, that we have seen a steady number of cases throughout Los Angeles County because of the wide availability of testing. I also believe that here in Glendale, we have been early to provide testing to our residents at multiple facilities, both private clinics, the hospitals, and through the partnership of Glendale Memorial and the county, the drive-through facility, testing facility. It has been readily available for our community to have testing. Therefore, I do believe there is a correlation to the number of cases and the number of tested because of the availability of testing. I also believe several days last week where we saw over 1,000 positive cases throughout the county, it was a result of a backlog of tests that were released at a lab. There was one day where there was, I believe it was 800 tests that were released because of a lab backlog, so that helped to spike those numbers. To answer your question, yes, more testing potentially could mean more positivity and more, more people being known that they have the virus, which is ultimately what we want. We want to know who has it.
Okay. And, and right now, there potentially, I mean, we don't, we can't know the total number of infected people because all we can know is those people who come in to get tested for whom we receive results.
That is correct.
We know that we don't have less than the number that's being published on the public health website, but we could possibly have more. We could have individuals who are asymptomatic, right? And, but we are seeing at least, from what I can observe in my understanding and what I'm trying to understand, that what we're doing is more or less working?
Yes, Councilmember Kasakian, I do believe it is working, and I do believe that we are, I mentioned earlier, I believe we are flattening the curve. What I want to see is that we bend that curve. I want to see literally us hanging on that curve and bending it downwards and continuing to see it flatten into, to zero positive cases. I do believe that is a challenge because of the nature and the, the ease that this virus has in spreading, and therefore, the stay-at-home order, I do believe, is the best way to see those results continuing to trend downward.
In terms of, I have a question for the police chief, if Chief Ovelitis is around.
Yes, he's here, he's listening. Go ahead with your question.
In terms of the enforcement for the mask ordinance that we passed, I know that you mentioned that, you know, you pass them out, that you try to urge people, you're giving warnings from what I understand, but do you have any ability to gauge what percent of the population has been adhering to this law? The ones that have, that you publicly encounter, is there any type of statistics that we can rely on to see whether it's been effective?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Kasakian, we have not taken a statistical poll by officers observing it. The, the general consensus that I get back from the officers that are working on patrol that have done that, that most people are complying with that, and those that aren't, when we warn them, either comply or as I said, they, they head home.
But we don't know if it's out of 10 contacts, two people are not wearing masks, three people are not?
No, I don't, I don't have it based on statistics.
Okay, and, and have there been anyone that's been cited multiple times for not wearing a mask?
We, we have not had to cite anybody for not, for not wearing a mask.
Or warned?
Not that I'm, not that I'm aware of, but as I said, depending on how, depending on how that process would actually come together and whether it's the same officer, we're not necessarily taking names at this point either. As I said, we're just reminding people to make sure that they're in compliance.
Okay. So I have other questions, but I know that probably the patience of my colleagues is wearing thin on this issue, but I will just say that, that I voted for this because I believe on erring on the side of caution. We are facing a pandemic. We have to do what we can to keep our communities safe. But the concerns that were raised last time and the details related to this ordinance are still of great concern to me and ones that I have issues with. One of them, you know, was mentioned about the wearing of the mask in cars. I didn't ask about whether someone should wear a mask in a car because I was trying to be cute or glib, but because I really want the public to understand, when we pass a law, what is the basis of it, what is the intent of it, and most importantly, what is the consequence for not following that law? Because the worst thing we can do as the governing body of the city is pass a law that has no teeth, that really means nothing, because then the public is going to question, why follow it? When it comes to this, I do believe, and I still believe, that the recommendation to wear masks would have been preferable, and then to go up in stages rather than to go from where we were to DEFCON 1 and require everyone to immediately wear it, to be able to have measures in place to see how effective it was, to be able to have individuals who could give us appropriate feedback and statistics so we can know what the next steps were. Because I don't know if this doesn't work, what the next step is, truly. And in addition to that, there are valid concerns brought, not the least of which is the medical reasons for it. Now, I know that there were other articles cited and research cited, but I agree with one of my colleagues, and I can't recall who, who said, if the article or the research is not peer reviewed, if it's not a legitimate research piece, to just base legislation that impacts everyone in this city is hasty. And in addition to that, I would like to continue to see some feedback and as well as, you know, how many of our residents are even able to afford masks, how many are not able to, and how are we procuring masks to provide masks for those people that we've required for them to wear masks to be able to leave their house? If there was a desire to escalate this back for one level and make it a strong recommendation from council, which would, I think, ease somewhat of the burden on our public safety and law enforcement, I'd be for that. But ultimately, I don't think that there is, based on what I've heard from my colleagues. But I will just put that out there as my opinion and my thoughts on it.
Thank you. I would like to go to City Manager Yasmin Beers.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just wanted to respond also, in addition to what I had said earlier about Councilmember Brotman's questions of Dr. Wang that he was unable to answer. There is a call with the Department of Public Health every Friday, and they've opened that up to elected officials, and all council members, of course, are invited to that call. And that is a great opportunity for all of us to be able to ask some of the questions that we want of the Department of Public Health. And as I said, they're unable to join us because of the number of cities, but that is their way to be able to communicate with the 88 cities within the county, and we'll make sure to get on that call this, this week and hopefully get in the queue, and if Councilmember Brotman's on, hopefully he'll get in the queue to, to be able to ask that question. Just wanted to provide that context as well.
Thank you. With that, I want to go to action item 8A, Mr. City Clerk.
What? Wait, are we finished for this discussion?
Yes.
What's going on?
Yes.
I don't know.
Yes, we are finished with the discussion now. We go to item 8A. Sorry.
There's a lot more to discuss.
We'll discuss it next week, hopefully.
Um, I don't know how this normally works, but I mean, I have, I have something else I want to talk about which has nothing to do with masks.
Okay, go ahead, if it's nothing to do with masks, but I want to go to the action items and get this over. I mean, we have...
I mean, we all do, we all do, but this is a critical issue for the community, I think.
I mean, we all do, we all do, but this is a critical issue for the community, I think.
Go ahead.
We need to take the whole night, let's take the whole night. I mean, the thing I wanted to talk about was, you know, I've seen, and I'm sure we've all seen on social media, there's this perception that Glendale has one of the highest rates in the county. People are putting this out there. Now, people are saying we're not doing enough to enforce distancing. There's finger pointing in some cases at immigrant groups. There's even some, I've gotten emails on people speculating about secret gatherings. And so I was encouraged today when Chief Lonzus presented that data showing some comparisons, looking at it from a per capita perspective, looking at trends. I think it would be really helpful if we could find a way to communicate better to the public some of the nuances about these numbers because we know that, you know, as Councilmember Kasakian was saying before, variations in the timing of when cities are ramping up testing is going to have an impact on the numbers. Other things like the number of, what do you call that, the specialized nursing facilities, is that what they're called?
Skilled nursing facilities.
What's that?
Skilled nursing facilities.
Skilled nursing facilities, yeah. I mean, the number of skilled nursing facilities or particular outbreaks that occurred, skilled nursing facilities is a big factor. And I think there's so many things with this data that makes it problematic, and the data, I mean, you know, the data that the Department of Public Health is providing every day on a number of confirmed cases. This data is so problematic yet people don't really, I think, understand how to approach it. So if there's some way that we could get out some more, you know, balanced information, I'm not talking about sugarcoating anything. I mean, if there's something, you know, we need to be worried about here, then let's get it out there. But just put it out in a way that is, it helps clear up some of the confusion and some of, I think, the misperception that we're doing a bad job.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, based on the questions posed by Councilmember Brotman, we do have some of this information, many of the information that was provided by Chief Lonzus on our website under the City of Glendale's website, and the initial page is the COVID-19 information. And it is part of that, and if you go to the COVID-19 dashboard, that's where all the graphs are. And so it's provided there. We'll take another look at it to see if any of the information can, that was provided tonight is not up on our website, we'll provide that on the website as well. But majority of what was presented, if not all, is on the website currently.
Is there a way for us to get it out? I don't know what the channels are, but I do, I think you'll probably all agree that there is this perception out there. And I think it's important for us to get the message out. So just having it on the website, you know, is probably not going to do the trick.
We'll provide it also appropriately by way of social media. And we do have newsletters that we also distribute, as you are aware. So we'll use whatever platforms that are available to us to communicate and educate the best that we can.
Okay.
Thank you.
Paula Devine, I have a question about, if I can ask Yasmin or Jasmin Beers. Can you explain to our residents about identifying hotspots here in Glendale? And can we do that where there seems to be a pocket of infection? Or how we are handling that kind of information?
Sure. Mayor Agajanian, members of the city council. In terms of hotspots in the community, the information that we are provided on a daily basis is from the Department of Public Health. Once the Department of Public Health releases that information, that's when the information becomes quote-unquote "public" to all of us. As you can imagine, these are all related to medical issues, and there are HIPAA rules and regulations in place. And we have great relationships with our three hospitals in the City of Glendale, and we're in direct communication weekly and sometimes daily with our hospitals as well. But in terms of that kind of information, where it provides, you know, any sort of information that would specifically tell you where in a city such as our size, we don't have access to that kind of information. And I would venture to guess that it is, you know, a virus. And so it's going to be in all parts of the City of Glendale. And depending on if individuals are actually tested and know that they have COVID-19, some may not know, as you're very well aware, in terms of being asymptomatic. We just don't have access to that information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now, I would like to go back to Item 8A.
But 8C, we'll have to take a, if there's any action on that or no?
Well, there's nothing on there in terms of a formal motion. But if council wants to provide further direction on any of the orders, that would be the time.
Mr. Mayor, there is a couple of things I do want to ask about.
Please, go ahead.
I know that, again, I apologize, I do apologize. I know it's been a long day, and this is very trying on all of us. At the end of the day, the public has asked all of us to lead them during this time of crisis, and we have great faith in you as well, Mr. Mayor. So I think it bears, you know, we need to do what we need to do at this moment to kind of plan for the future. So I would like to ask staff, and I know that they're already working on this, but you put together whatever task force you need, both public, private sector, to figure out ways to bring our city back, whether it's in phases, whether it's following the county and the state guidelines. But, you know, to find ways of how we're, and also include our schools and include the college, the staff from there, and representatives. Because I'll tell you, if there was a declaration that we could all go back to the way things are tomorrow, because the schools are closed, many parents cannot return to work because at least one parent would have to stay home with the kids, or they would have to find some alternative childcare. So it's not realistic to push for everything to return to normal if the schools are still out indefinitely. And as we know, now till the end of the year, and we don't know what's even happening with summer school. So we need to all be on the same page, even though we are the city council, and to get reports and feedback on that. In addition to that, there have been reports to me, possibly to staff as well, about price gouging. We know that during times of crisis like this, you know, we've seen it with hurricanes and generators and whatever else it may be. And now it may be toilet paper and sanitizer. But in a time when we're especially requiring people to wear masks, if I'm correct, let me just stop here for a moment, ask my colleague, Councilwoman Devine, you will not downgrade your initial vote and recommendation for a mandatory mask law in Glendale?
I will not, based on Dr. Wang's information.
So based on that.
I won't either.
Thanks to Councilmember Najarian. So I would like us to at least have some process in place so for when there are vendors who are price gouging or individuals are taking opportunity of this situation to at least have information available as to how people can report these individuals to the proper authorities. That may be us, that may be the DA, that may be the Attorney General. But I do think that we need to make that information available for the public to be able to have someone that they could complain to and get redressed.
City Manager Yasmin Beers will answer some concerns.
Yes.
And one last comment for the Fire Chief, and a question perhaps. You know, we talked a lot about testing, but I do want everyone to be clear, and I'd like the chief to validate this, even though the doctor probably should have as well, but we'll rely on the chief since he's become an expert now in this emergency. Now, chief, we talked about testing, but let's, can you please tell folks, if they tested negative already, is it possible still for them to get infected?
100% yes. It is absolutely possible.
Thank you. That is all. And I thank my colleagues for indulging me.
City Manager Yasmin Beers.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, in response to Councilmember Kasakian's questions related to how do we get ourselves back in the normal kind of way of life? And what does that mean if all of these orders were to be lifted tomorrow, a week from now, or two weeks from now? Points are very well taken. We do have an internal task force that has been put together that will be coming up with policies and procedures in terms of how the City of Glendale will be handling any orders to open back up completely and what that looks like for us here within this organization by way of our parks, by way of our libraries, community development, Public Works, you name it, all of our departments. What does that look like for Glendale? In terms of the city as a whole, a task force is going to be put together, hasn't been put together yet. Again, another point very well taken, based on our chambers of commerce, our business districts, MSPA, et cetera. All of those folks will come together along with GCC and GUSD as well as us to have the conversation about what that may look like and what assistance can we all provide one another in this process to open up our communities back up under some of the orders that will be in place post the orders that we have today. In terms of price gouging, very good question, and we've received a number of complaints regarding price gouging. You and I have talked about it also, Mayor Agajanian, in terms of some of the things that you've heard from your constituents. The Attorney General is one avenue for folks to have any complaints that they may have and provide it to them. And there's an 800 number that I will provide here, but we will get information together and provide that information to the community so that information's out there and provide it to the business community so that they're also aware that price gouging should not be occurring. That 800 number is 1-800-952-5225. There's that number. Individuals can also go online and fill out a complaint form. And that complaint form is at www.oag.ca.gov, www.oag.ca.gov. And again, we will definitely provide that in our written materials because I don't think we've done that, and we'll make sure to do that.
Thank you very much. So now, if we went through all those questions, so we go to Action Item 8A, please.
Action Item 8A, Public Works Regarding City of Glendale Measure R Sub Regional Program Update. 8A1 Motion Approving The Additional Programming Under The Adopted Measure R Sub Regional Program.
We'll go directly to Mr. M. Roni.
Yes, please. Mr. M. Roni.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, and I just wanted to add my congratulations to you, Mayor Agajanian, for your election to position a mayor. This, we have a short presentation on Measure R, just a few slides that I will go through quickly. You can go to the next slide, please. So Measure R is a half-cent sales tax for Los Angeles County that was approved in 2008. And it's projected to bring $40 billion to help with traffic congestion relief and transportation upgrades throughout the county, and it has a 30-year lifespan. Our current share here in the City of Glendale is, for completed projects that we've done and all the future program projects, is 43.7 million so far. And we are planning on spending an additional $17.1 million in the next three years. So here's our progress report so far. We have completed 19 projects since the inception of Measure R for a total of almost $25 million. We have 11 projects in progress for a total of $17 million. We have a couple of future projects and two requests for new projects, which is part of our request for tonight that add up to almost $4.2 million, which add up to the $48 million that I was mentioning before. Here are some of our projects that we have completed to date, just a quick, kind of a going through it. Here are pictures of San Fernando and Grand View at-grade rail crossing improvements and Sonora Avenue at-grade rail crossing safety upgrades. And again, a variety of different projects that we are working on currently from a sound wall project on I-210 to various traffic signal modifications. And we also, again, have traffic signal modifications at various locations that we're working on Honolulu Avenue and Montrose and Chevy Chase Drive at California Avenue and, you know, one on North Verdugo Road. The new project request that we have, we are submitting for tonight are two. One is Broadway Traffic Signal Modification at San Fernando Road, Columbus Avenue and Galleria. And then the other one is a downtown Glendale Signal Synchronization at the downtown Glendale arterial and Collector roadways. We also have a couple of projects that we don't have a, what's called a funding agreements in place yet, but the funding has been programmed. And these are the signalization and widening, signalization of State Route 2 at Holly and widening of State Route 2 freeway ramps at Mountain. And so that was kind of a quick summary of Measure R program. What I wanted to leave with you as our last slide is we also looked at which projects we could accelerate, either the design or the construction or both. So we looked at what we have, and here's a listing of five projects that we are accelerating as we speak. The first two are, one of them is a Colorado Columbus Rehab Project, and the other one is the Guard Rail Installation Project, which we brought before your council a few weeks ago. Both of those, we are accelerating the completion of the design from June of this year to April and the construction from September to July. The next project is the North Verdugo Road Signal Project and Flashing Beacon Installation Project. And we are on track for finishing the design in May, and we are going to accelerate the construction from September to August. Number four and five are a little bit further out, but again, we're going to accelerate those. The number four is the Glendale Train Station First Last Mile Improvements Project that we are going to improve the design to June and the construction to September of this year from July and October respectively. And then the last project is traffic signal modifications on La Crescent Avenue at Roseland and Shirley Jean and San Fernando Road at Highland that we're moving from September to July on the design and December to September. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have one question. I remember in Measure R, I guess we were getting the, in billions based on population of Glendale, as far as I remember at the time in 2008. The 40 million which we are expecting to get was based on population of this city. Am I right? And my question is this, I remember I was reporting in year 2008, the population of Glendale was reported approximately 193,000. Now the population is reported 205,000. So does that, will it impact on Measure R money? That's what I want to see, somebody will look into it, because that's by itself will be more money. So we shouldn't stop on 40 million. So maybe we are, 40 billion, or I mean, our share, 98.5 million, I mean. Maybe we are entitled to receive more, to be adjusted to more money. That's what I want somebody to look into it. That's what I want somebody to look into it, if it's possible.
Mr. Mayor, so yes, these are based on populations and population projection, and again, the amounts are approximate, but so every year as we move forward to request additional or request our funding, that's programmed, we will be looking at that, you know, if there are adjustments, then we would submit those requests.
Thank you. That will amount approximately to $7, $8 million. That's why I'm concerned, but anyway, thank you. Is there any questions from Mr. Emrani?
I'll move the item.
Thank you. Is there a second? Is there a second? Going one? Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brodmann.
Oh, yeah, please be quiet before that. There's no public, nobody on the line?
No. No.
Because I know somebody said to me they were going to be calling in. I just want to make sure.
But there is no phone call, so.
Okay.
I'm very good at the calls because I do it every day, so I'm very careful that if somebody calls, twice. And that's every day job.
Because earlier somebody said they couldn't get through, so, all right. I'm a yes.
Thank you. And we have the second, please, roll call.
Councilman Brodmann, yes.
Yes.
Devine?
Devine, yes.
Kosakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. So we go to item 8B, please.
Police Department Regarding Request Authorizing the City Manager to Execute an amended and restated professional service agreement with Vital Medical Services LLC for medical services for police department, arrestees and inmates to add $100,000 for fiscal year 2019, 2020, to extend the term for five years beginning on July 1st, 2020, and to establish fees for the extended term. V1 Motion Authorizing the City Manager to Execute an Amendment and Restated Professional Service Agreement with Vital Medical Services LLC to add $100,000 for the amount, not to exceed $1,506,582 through June 30th, 2020, to extend the term for five years beginning on July 1st, 2020, and to establish fees for the extended term with a first year cost of $570,180 with annual increases based on Consumer Price Index or 3%, whichever is less.
Thank you. Chief Pololitis, be good. Okay, Chief Pololitis, please.
Good evening, Mayor Agajanian, members of city council. Carl Pololitis, Police Chief. Here tonight to request some additional funding for the current term of the vital medical contract and to request that we enter into an extension for five years with that group. So just to start off, prior to 2014, we didn't, the way that we handled our medical clearances, because anytime that we arrest somebody, if they have a medical condition, we are required to get a medical clearance before booking them, whether it's in the Glendale City Jail or in an LA County facility, we would take them to one of our local emergency rooms and then get the medical clearance from the hospital. Generally, that would take two police officers, and with the waiting time and the paperwork that needed to be done, it would generally take about two, sometimes more than two hours in order to do that. In 2014, Vital Medical Service came into being, and they offered a service where, as opposed to us taking the arrestee to a hospital, they actually came to our facility to provide those clearings. They are the only service that, or the only company that provides this service. So in 2014, we entered into our initial agreement with them with extensions. Both of those options were exercised by the department, and then we re-entered into a contract with them with city council approval in 2017, which took us through 2018 and 2019 with the extensions that were exercised by the department. The department itself has been very satisfied with the services received from Vital Medical. They have really kind of, in many ways, become part of the department. The police officers appreciate the service. It certainly adds to the efficiency of our operation. And I will tell you, one of the things that helps right now is we have a place that we can book them, and now while we're dealing with COVID-19, it actually even allows us to actually have somebody cleared in the Sallyport, thereby minimizing contact with a particular individual while they're being medically cleared and to be able to minimize contact both to our jail staff, additional police officers, and with anybody else who might be in the facility. So the way that we have this set up is we have a certain, we have a baseline contract where the contract includes 40 medical clearances and 40 blood draws, because one of the other services they will provide for us is DUIs, they will do the blood draw, and again, they come to us as opposed to us having to go to the hospital. On top of that baseline service, there are other procedures that they perform for us. They're listed there, but they'll testify in court, they'll go to our DUI checkpoints, but I'll tell you one that's really important to the department itself, is that they do communicable disease testing for us. And so prior to COVID-19, because they do have the ability to test for COVID-19, and they can do that on our behalf, but if we have someone who's also had an exposure, one of our bigger concerns in the past has also been HIV, that if one of our officers has had an encounter with a suspect and there's been some kind of an exchange of bodily fluids, that the, we can go through the appropriate legal paperwork and have somebody tested, they will provide that service and they will get us, they guarantee to get it back to us in 48 hours, and I will tell you their services, for the most part, they have put it back in, or brought it back to us within 24 hours, which allows for a certain peace of mind for the people that work for us. So we, as I said, there's the base rate, and then there are the services we pay above the base when we need them or on an as-needed basis. One of, go back one. One of the things that we found is our usage has actually increased. So between 2018, the total use of the contract went up about 10%, but when you look at 962 procedures in 2018, 580 of those were medical clearances, and then in 2019, we had 1,050 total procedures, 722 of those ended up being medical clearances. So what we found is that with the various reforms in the criminal justice system and the people that we end up arresting, there's been a change in the mix of the populations, and so we've had to increase the use of vital medical services in order to continue doing our job. On an average year, we're going to book between 8,000 and 10,000 people, so that'll give you kind of a little bit of that. So when we do this and we bring them in, the one, one of the things that this offers a major advantage for us is it saves us over 4,000 hours of police officer time. So the fact that we can have a medical professional come to our facility, handle the booking, the medical clearance or the blood draw, it allows us to expedite putting police officers in the field, and that's the equivalent of about two full-time police officers, in essence saving us about $400,000 a year in time and of officers and providing service to the community. So ultimately, what we're asking for in the recommendation is, one is to add the $100,000. The reason for adding the $100,000 to the contract is when we originally entered into this contract, we estimated that would be around 40, 40 medical clearances a month and 40 blood draws a month. That worked for the first couple of years, but as the contract has gone further and that population that we're arresting has changed and we found that they've had more medical issues, we've had to increase that usage, and so we need to add some money to the contract to cover those procedures. And then we're requesting that we enter into a five-year amended and restated agreement with Vital to continue to provide those services. So that would be broken down in that it's still the baseline amount of 40 clearances and 40 booking procedures as the baseline, so they're guaranteed that amount, which has been our older historical average, and that's about, breaks down to about $397,000 a year. And then we anticipate we're going to go above that 40 as we have in the last year, and so what we call the rate-based services, we're anticipating about another 163,000 in that area, and then the DUI checkpoints, which are generally grant-funded and the funding comes from that, about $10,000 goes into that area. We found that their rates are very competitive. We think we've negotiated a very good contract for the city. It will only increase by CPI, so going into this contract does allow us to lock down our rates for the next five years while having a very efficient service provided to the department and one that we need to do in order, or need to have in order to continue to do our job. So again, our recommendation is to add the $100,000 for this and then enter into a five-year contract starting at $570,000 and allowing a 3% or CPI increase, whichever is less. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. So I'm looking at page three of 8B, if you have what I have, I don't know. So what I understand here, that previously we were paying almost like 300,000 per year, and you say that was not enough, right?
That's correct.
Now, we want to raise this 300,000 to 570,000. Am I right? Per year.
So what we want to do is we want to leave the same baseline number of procedures in place.
Okay.
Okay, so that would go up and so it'd be about $397,000 per year for the baseline procedures.
But that was.
But then we're asking to make sure on the contract, there's a total of 570,000 for the year, because based on what we're actually experiencing, we think we're going to be above those baseline procedures. So we need to have the funding there to provide for the rate-based services above the first 40 medical clearances.
Okay, I have a question about that, but let me ask another. Now you're 100,000 more, right?
Correct.
At this time. But let's say for past 40 days, you didn't have more procedures to be done by this company, like Vital Medical Services. So we don't have any saving because they worked less during this 40 days?
If we're below 40, then we don't necessarily recognize the saving. That's part of the negotiation to make this.
So we'll be the same amount?
To make this work, they, yeah, they're guaranteed the flat amount. But I think, you know, even though we may not be as booking many, as many people right now in the current state of emergency, what we are finding is we still have the need for medical clearances because the people that we still book require that. I mean, in reality, if you think about that, one booking per day that requires a medical clearance gets you fairly close to the 40 per month.
Okay. But then we want to raise this fee to 570,180 dollars per year. Am I right?
That would be the not-to-exceed amount on the contract for the.
And then you say this is for five years.
Correct.
So, but how come you didn't say the, what the total amount is?
So the total amount will actually vary slightly because it will depend on what the rate of inflation is or the Consumer Price Index change. So the max they can get is 3% per year, in which case it would come up to about 2.9 million. But if the Consumer Price Index is less than 3%, then actually the not-to-exceed amount on the contract would be slightly less than that.
So in essence, we are going from, for five years, 1,506,000, we are going to 2,800,000. It's like 80% more, isn't it?
Well, the base of the contract would actually, because it's going to be a range, the base of the contract would be going to about 2.1 million, and then the maximum part of the contract, the not-to-exceed, would go to about 2.9 million, plus or minus.
If we utilize the service.
If we utilize things above the baseline.
All right.
And based on our recent history, what we're finding is we're utilizing above the baseline. If we were to go back to utilizing the baseline, then obviously the amount of money would be less than 570.
Okay, thank you. Is there any question from Chief Pololitis?
I'll move.
You moved the item. Is there a second? If there is no question, I need a second.
I do have a question.
Please.
I just want to make sure that, so there's a couple of questions I have about this contract. If, for whatever reason, you know, there's a miraculous stop in all crime and we're not booking as many individuals, I believe that there's, the city retains the ability to cancel the contract, right?
Mayor Agajanian, members of council, Councilmember Kosakian, that is correct. There is a termination clause that the city may exercise in the contract at 60 days' notice.
Thank you. So first, I have to say that I think that the company, the service is an important service. I know of individuals, doctors, who have had to treat individuals that our police have brought in, and the amount of time that our police have had to dedicate sitting there while it's happening. So I think this is, and also, let's see, you know, since we're talking about a pandemic and we're talking about emergency preparedness, do they have the ability to also test our personnel for COVID-19 as well as anyone that is brought in?
Yeah, Councilmember Kosakian, yes, they do have the ability to test for COVID-19. That is one of the things that is included in the contract.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a yes as well.
Do I have the second? Who's the second on this side?
Councilmember Najarian, seconded.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Najarian. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brodmann?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kosakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Najarian. Next item on the agenda, please.
Next item would be oral communications. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
I do not receive any cards and I don't see any calls.
Are you sure? Check the phones, Mr. Mayor. You take a call in, sure, with, in the evening or what? How come you're so good at the phones?
I have to go and get to my calls in few minutes. Thank you. So anybody wants to?
Move to adjourned.
Move to adjourned. Do I have the second? We are, yes. Okay, we are adjourned at 8:33 PM. Thank you, everybody. See you soon.